All right. Good, good evening. The regular meeting of the case Kansas City Public School Board Directors of May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one is called the order. All right. Welcome and good evening. Hello, hello to Dr. Bedell, fellow board members, the community that are represented here, as well as outside of our four walls, as well as to Dr. Bedell's team. So June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Buckner, here. Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Here.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here. Thank you, June. All right. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda as presented? No? Okay. Well, how about a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. All right. Thanks, June. Are there any, any folks signed up for public comment? No? All right, then we'll roll directly into the DAC presentation and we'll welcome Ms. Susan Stocking to the podium. Hello, ma'am.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Chairperson Hogan, and members of the board. The District Advisory Committee held our last general meeting of the twenty-twenty-one school year last Wednesday. Featured at the meeting was an update from Dr. Bedell about the return to in-person learning and impact of COVID quarantines at schools in the district. Dr. Bedell, thank you for being available to answer questions from our parents as well as members of the press. We also heard from local social justice group More Squared, who have been working to end school suspensions at the grade, at the grade school level and beyond. They have an education task force that has been working with Dr. Woodley and are asking for more KCPS parents to become involved with that education group. Real-world learning coordinator Crystal Everett reviewed summer internships, some paid, available, available for KCPS students. We had a great presentation about summer schools from Anthony Holland and Dr. Sharp, who shared summer school locations, topics, transportation, bell times, incentives, and curriculum. Courtney Adams also facilitated a conversation about Title I and family engagement. After the meeting concluded, we designated, the designated DAC delegates remained to vote on the twenty-one-twenty-two DAC Executive Board. We had a quorum and our new board was elected. In addition to returning members, Demonte Rochester, Tiara Trotter-Posy, and Steve Burton, the new members elected to the DAC Executive Board are Dion Lewis, a parent and SAC VP at Lincoln, Angie Lyle, also a Lincoln SAC member, and a neighborhood leader and a KC Tiff Watch Coalition member, Miari Rubio, a parent at JA Rogers, who's interested in serving in the DAC Board as a bilingual guide for Spanish-speaking families, and Kelly Yokum, a KCPS Exceptional Ed teacher at King, whose interests include equity and improved academic scores for all students in our district. The newly-elected board will meet to determine officer positions, and I hope you join me in congratulating them. Over the course of this unique school year, DAC has partnered with Urban League of Greater Kansas City, KC Tiff Watch, League of Women Voters, More Squared, Justice in the School, Missouri PTA, Scholastic, and Parent University. Meeting topics included creating trauma-informed schools, real-world learning opportunities, twenty-twenty-one KCPS legislative agenda, KCPS calendar options, KCPS budget process, return to in-person learning for students, and DAC members participated in Code of Conduct Equity Revision Committees, Board Government Relations, Board Communications. We participated in a KCPS Board of Education Candidate Forum. We participated in Blueprint Twenty-Thirty. We tested enrollment systems for the IT Department, and we served on the KCPS Enrollment Committee. Finally, this evening, I'd like to recognize Courtney Adams and Camila Alvarez. Courtney is always a tremendous help organizing the general meetings, putting together slides, capturing information, posting to the district website, and putting to, putting together communications for DAC. She's also helped, she also helped us to pull off our first virtual election without a hitch. And Camila Alvarez has been instrumental in expanding our reach to our Spanish-language families, providing simultaneous translation services for the meetings and for our slides, and we are so grateful for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stocking, and thank you to DAC for all the great work that you guys are doing, engaging our community. All right. Well, with that, I just have one quick item for Board Chair Report, which is a quick reminder to our board that we have our June twenty-sixth retreat. So I'm sure June is working on a location for us, hint, hint. And one of the things I, one of the things I just want to remind you of, please get to me any recommendations you have on folks who can help facilitate a workshop with us. I would like to have those as soon as possible so that I can meet with those individuals and bring proposals back to the board on June ninth, so the board can decide on who we're going to leverage for that. So with that being said, the Board Chair recognizes Mr. Treasurer, Manny Abarka.
Thank you. All right. So going ahead and moving on to our first slide here. It's important to note that we are eighty-three percent of the way through the fiscal year at this point. So as we look at our summary of funds here, we are at eighty-five percent of the budgeted revenues and sixty-four percent of the expenditures as of April thirtieth. So that's the, the two numbers there. That budget amendment, one, year-to-date actual, two-hundred-seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, and two-hundred-and-eighty-nine, and one-hundred-and-eighty-four. As we look at the next page of local revenues here, you can see current delinquent property taxes are currently ten million under budget, largely due to our unknown state appeals process and local protested taxes. So again, this is a process that has been ongoing and perpetual for not only this past year, right, but the previous two years. So that's an outstanding amount of dollars there that we are waiting to receive. We are at ninety-one point seven percent of the total local revenues as we look at our page four here. Going on to page five, county, state, and federal revenues. All of these groups are on track with several drawdown requests to be completed as the year winds down. Total revenues at eighty-five percent of the budget at this point. So looking at our pie chart, local is still seventy-seven percent of our total budget, largest lion's share of our total revenues. Looking at expenditures here, salaries and benefits are still at seventy percent as we pay out through August fifteenth for this fiscal year. Several lines of purchased services and supplies show where we have saved this year due to the time we were not in person. One great example of substitute teachers is only thirty-seven percent of the budget at this point. Looking at our total pie charts, sorry, I'll let Linda catch up there. But our total pie charts, we are at, sorry, salaries and benefits equals sixty-five percent of our total budget. Still, this is pretty common. So investments noting that our maturities to tide of payroll dates run through eleven-thirty next year. Again, this is as we receive the large chunks of revenues incoming. We make these investments so that we can cover our cash flow throughout the entire year when we are not receiving those large chunks of money. So that is it from my end.
Thank you, Mr. Abarka. Any questions for the treasurer? No? Okay. And just a reminder for the board, you might lean into your mics a little bit, just so that everyone in the community can hear. We have asked Brian to turn up the mics a little bit, but just, it'll be helpful. All right. Well, we'll move on to ad hoc committee reports, and I'm going to mix things up and just keep them really interesting and ask Ms. Wolfsey to start off with government relations.
Thank you. Is this good? Just making sure. I really don't have a, a report to give tonight except to say that we did finish the session at the end of May fourteenth. It, it was an interesting end of session, and I'm going to leave some of that for June ninth. We're hoping to have the folks from John Barge and Associates come and do a legislative session recap. But essentially, equity funding did not make it across the finish line. That was one thing that we were working on. And, but what did make it across in the, the ed reform world was House Bill three forty-nine, which was education savings accounts. So we'll be watching how those get implemented. But I hope to have, like I said, Mr. Ropie here from John Barge on June ninth to give a recap, and then a reminder that we will have a government relations meeting on Tuesday, I believe it is June fifteenth at eight AM. And that's my report.
Any questions for Ms. Wolfsey? All right. And on to, how about we go to Ms. Cortez for Finance and Audit Committee?
I think I got it to work this time. Sorry. The Finance Committee met last week and will meet again on Wednesday, June sixteenth. Ms. Quinley and her team were kind enough to spend some time walking us through the continuing evolution of the twenty-one-twenty-two budget, with a little bit of insight into the coming budget amendment two as well. And then we spent quite a bit of time being, learning about and asking questions about the process that the Finance Department uses to source the auditing contract, that, the audit that will ultimately come to this board in November or December. We walked through the very detailed process that's undertaken, and I think the members of the Finance Committee will be prepared to, you know, either ask good questions or reinforce the information when the contract comes to the board in June for approval. But kind of an important function to understand how our audits come to be and why we choose the auditors that we choose in order to meet our obligations.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Any questions? No? Okay. And we'll turn it over now to Ms. Buckner for CCE Committee.
Yes, so we met May twentieth, last Thursday, at five-thirty. This was a change from the eight-thirty time. There were nine in attendance, three board members, one person from DAC, and five guests. We went through just a context of where we are as far as communication and community engagement, thanks to Kelly Waichel's team, providing a nice slideshow, talking about where we are. Then Dr. Jones unpacked previous conversations from the committee before, and that led to a discussion about the future of these committee meetings and what they would look like and, you know, how it would be structured. Nate, Mr. Hogan, was absent for that meeting, and so we hope to have all voices from the committee present so that we can make some final, you know, decisions on the days and times that the committee meetings will be held.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Any questions? Just for the record, I was on a much-needed vacation on that day. I wasn't just sitting in my PJs, watching cartoons, which would be really, really enjoyable, actually. All right. So we will move things along to Dr. Bedell for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a couple of items, about six items that will be covered under the Superintendent's Report, and we'll follow through on each of these items as written out on the agenda. There will be several items where it will just be a verbal update to just keep the community apprised and should take no longer than one minute to update. And there'll be a couple of others where we will have some slides, and, and then we will conclude it with the preliminary budget presentation from Linda Quinley. So we will get started with our video highlight, a student voice and teacher appreciation voice.
They say the first seven years of your life is when you're most receptive to learn. And had you asked me then what I wanted to be, I would have smiled big, whispered through cricket teeth, una abogada. Could imagine myself all grown, willing, all ell wood suited up fighting for the freedom of another, not knowing most of the real fight happens before then. For knowledge, be the best lawyer, be the best internal guide to exist in the white man's world. They say the first seven years of your life is when you create cycles and habits that will trap you if you let it. My high school walls tell the story of how I found myself. The real me, not the traumatized seven-year-old stuck on survival mode with a fragile voice and a desire to be hugged. Walking those halls reminds me to sit still, spine straight, back pressed against cold uncomfortable chairs to breathe in. Notice the fear run rampant in my lungs just at the thought of hearing that bell ring and pull me out of my daydreams and into cluttered hallways for the fifth time today. Reminds me of the growth that lives in being uncomfortable. Reminds me to call upon my most important lessons of high school, the art of unlearning. A class I was never assigned to and probably would have never passed if it was a real thing, but was fortunate enough to experience between the lines. All the conversations held in empty classrooms and after poetic assemblies. My high school walls tell the story of how I found myself, in you, of course. The unsung heroes of the world, all big and prideful, shouting like a lion that learned the secrets of Utopia. The first headstrong animal that decided to heal instead of devour. Wisdom be your strength. I remember the first time I performed a poem, and the way my eighth-grade English teacher looked at me like I had it. Some form of passed-down, embroidered bravery. Ms. Shelley, a veteran who knew so much more about life than me, still proud of the way I articulate my words. Standing there, sweaty palms and heavy limbs with nothing to offer but a rhyming-shaking poem about sexism. Hearing that my words were necessary, I knew that high school was going to be a blast if all the lines were like this, if they all encouraged me to speak to demand attention for my words. And even though some of them weren't, were more Cornell notes and silent readings, the others made up for it. Like my sophomore debate teacher, who supported me when in the middle of the discussion I was interrupted by a deeper voice and I said, "Excuse me, I'm not done speaking." My very own Kamala moment before her debut, and the way he passed me the talking stick, apologized for the young boy's eagerness to interrupt. The first time I felt like a male was actually listening, actually excited to hear the next words fly out of my mouth. He taught me that the best fighting words can be said without blurred lines. The slander is a technique of the uncreative mind. I know now I would not be me without these moments, without these lightbulb humans to guide me to my faith. Would have seen my life with so much purpose if I never drowned myself in the sorrows of Sylvia Plath at fifteen. Wouldn't be so sure in my existence if I didn't already master the art of questioning everything through the stranger. Wouldn't be the poet I am today if I didn't spend my entire high school's lunch period hiding behind my best friend's desk, watching Miss Phil James Baldwin's words into curious hearts and Zorain O'Herstling to the ones that lack confidence. So this is for you, humans of the world that were once broken seven-year-olds. The ones that grew up and decided to heal, decided to lead the herd of the next generation, despite looking at your paycheck and feeling taken for granted. Stubborn humans that won't let me say no to recording this poem. The ones that dreamt of my future before I was peaceful enough to dream on my own. To the boomers and millennials, who have dusted their desktops, brushed their teeth and hair, threw on a button-up shirt but kept the PJ pants, sat in front of a camera and still put one foot in front of the other exactly like they told us to. This is for you. I know you don't get much thanks, but the best gratitude should be that you keep education alive by inspiring people like me. So thank you for everything.
Well, thank you. We will be shaking that young lady's hand next Friday at the Chief Stadium as she walk across the stage as a part of that graduating class of twenty-twenty-one. And we're just proud of, of the talent that we have in this school district. We think poetic expression and debaters. We're getting ready to take off in this district with what's coming up through the pipeline, because we've done a lot of work at the lower levels in those areas. And so watch out, those folks we're going to be competing against here locally, but folks nationally also. So my next update for you all is just a quick COVID update. As you know, last week, the school district found itself in the middle of the media around having to close Trail Woods Elementary because we had exceeded the five percent virus rate at the school. What we want people to know is that as we've done our contact, contact tracing, all of those cases occurred outside of the school. But because it was over five percent, the procedures we have in place triggered that we had to move the school into quarantine. In addition to that, we've had cases pop up where maybe one or two cases. So for instance, Wheatley, they had one case where we had to close one classroom because the kid tested positive, and then there was another presumed, presumed case, which was a sibling of the student. My understanding is that hit the news too. And because we had to quarantine that one classroom, that resulted in over eighty-something parents or eighty-something absences the next day. And so, you know, we're, we're going to be dealing with this. I've shared this with people. You can go back and look at our previous live streams. We're going to have cases pop up in our classrooms and in our schools, and we're going to continue to adhere to our mitigation efforts. But I do want our parents to not panic, that we're, that because we are closing down the school to be, to operate and to be cautious, that it, that it means that we don't need to send our kids to school. It's safe. We have not had any cases spread in our schools because we still require masks. We still have all of the mitigation safety procedures in place. But these things are going to happen until we begin to get more and more of our students vaccinated, and that's generally our twelve-year-old students and up. I think we're at a point now in our country where we're at our lowest levels since last June. And on top of that, we've seen a continuous decline in this virus. We, as a community, will have to realize that we're going to have to live with this virus. It's, it's going to be no different than the flu. And we're going to be in a situation where if you're in a school and there's mass spread of the flu, we've had to shut schools down because of that and make sure that we're disinfecting and doing those types of things. But at the end of the day, like I just want, and it's really for our parents to hear this, your kid is safe being in our schools. If we have to close a class down, there is a system in place. Parents are notified well in advance. We will move to a virtual learning platform. But if your class is not a classroom that is being required to quarantine, please send your kids to school. We need them in school with us, not at home having off days. Because if the classroom is in action at the schoolhouse, there will not be any virtual teaching opportunities if you decide to not bring your kid to school. And then finally, I think it's important for our media to understand that this is going to be a norm across our area. I don't know that shutting down one class requires that it has to be something that's posted and plastered over the media because I think that just creates a whole different heightened level of fear that we just don't need right now with this pandemic. So I, I, I'm hoping our media partners are listening to that. You know, a school, a school closing down, okay. I, I think we can, we can understand that. But a classroom, you know, let's, let's just be mindful of the impact that this will have. We post everything on our website. Parents and students impacted, receive the communication. We do make sure that our board is updated. Anytime we have these incidents, they get the, the information in a Friday update. And if there is something much more significant than that, we will immediately alarm our board if it's something that's, that's significant like what happened over at Trail Woods. So I just want to make sure that I'm providing just a quick update and that, that, that your kids are in good hands with the Kansas City Public School District. And I didn't know if anybody had any questions before I moved on to the next area.
You said, you mentioned that all of it happened outside of the school. Can you unpack that?
Yes. I know we have, is that Ms. Lauren in the back?
Yes.
In terms of our contract tracing, the, the spread, based on what we've learned, this is happening, this is not happening inside of the school. So she's just asking that question.
We have not had any cases in which transmission has happened in the school. They've all been outside of the school.
So that may be that a, a, a parent may be, may be affected, and then that got passed over to the kid or they're hanging out with relatives or friends, but it's not happening, they're not getting it inside of the schoolhouse.
Correct, yes. There was, there was an event outside of a school that, that had, that made a lot of the transmission happen.
And I think, I think that supports a lot of the research that we've seen out there just more generally around, you know, infection spreading throughout K-12 education, right? Where most of the transmission originates outside the school and the kids come in with it, and then that's how it spreads within the.
Yeah, and that's, and the contact tracing is what helps keep that from continuing to spread in the school.
Yep. Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, one question, probably for the both of you. We're still continuing the vaccination opportunities for folks, right? As, as the, the timeframe of who's available to receive a vaccination changes, we're still creating that opportunity for our kids and families, right?
Yes, and, and we're working with Children's Mercy and the Health Department to vaccinate more kids. Unfortunately, when the twelve-year-olds got approved, there wasn't enough time in the school year to get that second dose in before the end of the school year. So we're going to work on summer school and some events during the summer.
That's great to hear. I just can't express enough the importance of the vaccination process. This helps us all get back to our normal that we want to see. Just taking off a mask and assuming things are going to get better is not going to do it.
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
And then are you able to speak to, I know you said the mask mandate is still in date, being required currently. Can you speak to summer school and then anything that we know for future?
Yes. What we're doing at this point is we're going to continue to require masks in our school district throughout the summer, unless we receive, and, and I think the other thing that we have to do is monitor the percentage of students that are receiving their vaccinations in that twelve-to-eighteen-year-old range. And so if we are able to establish herd immunity, I think at that point, we can come back to the table and, and have some different dialogue about whether we're going to require masks in the fall. But right now, full summer, we'll wait to hear it and get more updates from the CDC because they may end up relaxing the three-feet requirement. They may even say, given how things are going with the country, that there, that you may not, that you may not need to require masks at all. But right now, currently, the CDC is saying that schools should still require students to wear their masks. So we're not going away from that, and there is a strong chance that if we don't see a large increase of students getting the vaccination during the summer, we will open up school with students wearing their masks. I'd rather us have to wear a mask and be in school than to be out of school having to go through what we went through last year. So that's kind of my assurance to this community. It would have to be compelling for me at this point to say no mask, even as we are looking to go into the, the new school year.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So our, our next update is the marketing update. Ms. Waichu, we'll bring you up to provide an update to the board on, on where we are with our marketing plans.
Great. So a quick overview for our monthly marketing updates for the board. We're going to go over some digital streaming and marketing campaign numbers for you all to see some of the data right now around some of our digital campaigns, talk about summer school marketing, pre-K marketing, and then planning for the summer and next school year with the board and our team. Before I do that, do that, though, I want to mention Abby, the student who spoke the poem from memory. Abby is currently in the admissions process for the University of Missouri. So we're going to give the University of Missouri a brief moment to consider her application, tell her that, tell Missouri that she would be a wonderful candidate, and she needs to be admitted to explore her talents at the collegiate level. So a brief shout-out if the University of Missouri is. So a brief shout out if the University of Missouri is listening uh to get her through that admissions process. You can tweet. Um, and I also want to add to that point, Mr. Abarka, that when we posted Abby's video on Facebook, it received over ten thousand engagements with our community. It was one of the most popular posts during that Teacher Appreciation Week because she was speaking about teachers and her experience in our schools, um, but also showing off her talent um and her skills as a um speaker, orator, and a writer. All right, so these next couple of slides are about ten slides that go over all of our data as it relates to the digital streaming and marketing campaigns. Um, these numbers, I'm just going to briefly show you some of the highlights from the numbers so you can see how we engage with the community in these digital campaigns. And when we talk about digital campaigns, we have scripts and we have another company that you'll see. These are the companies through which we work to highlight our marketing efforts and advertising efforts for certain campaigns. So when we talk about digital advertising, these um highlight our signature school advertising efforts. And we look at the totals down there of impressions, you know, almost nine hundred thousand impressions, which is nine hundred thousand views of our ads and our ask of enrollment in those um, in those ads. You can see the clicks as well by school. How many people actually engaged or clicked on that content to find out more. And then CTR stands for click-through rate, which is the percentage at which people actually finish the ad and then possibly click on the enroll now button to go to our website to actually enroll or find out more information. The asterisk at the bottom talks about industry standard. The industry standard for click-through rates is point one zero percent. So you're going to see on all of our slides that we are, in these terms, well over the industry standard on engagement with our digital advertising. This click-through rate total is point four one percent. But you can see specifically, look at Lincoln Middle. Um, point nine seven percent of click-through rates is amazing. Um, but people are engaging with that Lincoln Middle advertisement to find out more, find out more information and potentially click on the enroll button to find out more information about enrollment. So these next ones, I'm not going to take that much time to explain all of that terminology, but we'll answer questions if we need and then kind of walk through some of that more specific stuff. Scripts media, this talks about the devices, the placements, the keywords, and the topics um through which people search for possible information about schools. Primary, secondary information, K-12, education, educational resources. And then you can see the top placements of YouTube, Fox Four, um texting and calling apps. Mobile devices are always going to be one of our top um avenues through which people access our content and then the computer as well. This is some examples, these are some examples of the creative that we used for the signature piece of our digital streaming campaigns. And again, you've probably seen some of these in the presentations that we've given before. You might have seen these yourself as you're navigating through your digital world. Uh, but this is just some examples of the creative that we've used. And then Spectrum is the other company through which we've worked for the digital streaming piece. And this is again um in conjunction and in collaboration with the scripts piece. And again, you'll see here on um the timeframe, the campaign name, the impressions, clicks, click-through rate, and engagements, and then site visits. Again, that site visits means how many people clicked through the entire ad to actually get to our enrollment site to find out more information or engage in the enrollment process. So again, you're looking here at an industry standard total of point two percent, point two zero percent, when again, the industry standard is point one zero percent. Uh, total engagements over five thousand. And those impressions, again, you know, three hundred and twenty-four thousand impressions uh through which people are seeing some glimpse of our KCPS material. Um, this is Spectrum's uh device top placement, top placements, um impressions and engagement numbers that you'll see here. And again, site visits of almost uh nine hundred and fifty-five, or nine hundred and fifty-five, almost a thousand visits there. This is example of the Spectrum creative that we've been using, again, in conjunction with the scripts creative that we used. And then television. Uh, television is one of our other suites of uh avenues that we use to reach our audiences. Uh, you'll see here the top five networks that we targeted to reach our audiences. And then you'll see the number of airings that we had of our commercials, the number of networks, and then the zones um in which we placed those commercials. This is going now to our neighborhood campaign. Again, some of the same timeframe, but a little bit later of the, the neighborhood piece. You'll see here by school, um how many impressions, clicks, and the click-through rate for each school. And you can see in that right-hand column which schools had the higher click-through rates, uh which schools had the lower click-through rates. I think this is really interesting data and as you guys, as a board, keep studying this, you'll see some trends, um whether it's the Northeast. Um, it also gets broken down, broken down by language here on one of my subsequent slides. But you'll see the schools that really have some click-through, it's an engagement here, like Gladstone Elementary is point six four, which is very much higher than the industry standard of point one zero percent. Um, I think that the trend data is, is useful and interesting for us as we're thinking about the neighborhoods, the zones, and the zip codes that we're targeting with our digital ads. This is another overview for the scripts piece about devices, placements, top keywords, and then the top topics that people are searching for that we feed those ads to. And again, example of creative as it relates to our neighborhood campaigns and um examples of what you've probably already seen through some of our presentations each month. This one um talks about, again, as we go to the digital advertising side, some of the click-through engagements and the site visits. This one is interesting to me. Um, I'm going to talk about Dr. Collier here. Um, if you look at that top line of the HR Job Fair, look at the number of impressions that those ads reached. Over two hundred thousand impressions about our HR Job Fair. Two hundred and forty-one clicks and then nineteen hundred engagements and then almost three hundred site visits. Dr. Collier, how many people engaged with our HR Job Fair this year? About a hundred and eighty, which is higher or lower than our typical? Higher than our typical engagement of our job fairs. So we were really intentional this year about promoting that job fair in that virtual environment to have folks engage with us um in a different way that we had not maybe tried before. This is one of our new adventures to try the HR Job Fair promotion digitally. And then you can see here, this is where you can see the Spanish, English um delineation for some of our schools and the engagements and site visits from the English and Spanish perspective. Again, the data is very telling and very trending on our schools that need the Spanish language representation and how many engagements versus the English are coming out of those digital ads. Again, um devices, placements, impressions, engagements, and visits for those focus schools in our neighborhood campaigns. And then again, examples of the creative that we've used for um these neighborhood campaigns. One of the things I want to, I'm going to see where we are here. I'm going to keep going, but I'm going to address this slide again real quick. One of the things we think about our creative, um, the join the district, making a difference for that job fair, what, what resonates with our potential teachers, that they can make a difference in KCPS. So as we look at the messaging that we use for our creative, as we pivot to the performance and experience, those SWOT analyses that we're looking at for each neighborhood school, how are we using those strengths, opportunities, and even those threats to form messaging as we move forward in our digital advertising? Um, so we've been using James as an example and their APR scores. Again, how are we pivoting and, and adjusting a little bit to make sure the messaging for each of these schools ties in to the research that we're doing for what resonates with our audiences? Again, this is television for our neighborhood schools. You see Southeast, you see kindergarten enrollment ads, the airings of five hundred and thirty-three across the networks, and the zones again in which we displayed these television, television commercials. One thing too we'll mention is that we cross-promote on our KCPS homeroom television show. So if you're watching KCPS homeroom on thirty eighth the spot, you're also going to see uh lots of our commercials for our schools that are actually not included in these total airing numbers um because it's not a part of what they monitor through the scripts platform. Streaming, it's another way that we've reached our audience through digital advertising. So you all as board members watch your Roku, your Apple TV, your Amazon, whatever your streaming device might be. And so as you're watching a program that maybe not, might not be a movie, but is a programming that has ads, you might have seen a KCPS ad pop up as we've targeted in GeoFence, which is GeoFence, it is we target ads in the neighborhoods or in the KCPS zone um in which you live. So you can see this is really popular too. As the completion rate is ninety-seven point five percent as a total, this means that almost a hundred percent of people are finishing that ad from beginning to end and watching that ad almost in totality. So again, that's a nature of, you're not going to skip through the ad. Sometimes you can't skip through the ad. But it's kind of the way you interact with your streaming device dictates how you're going to complete or not complete watching that ad. And we have very high completion rates. You see the impression numbers there for the zip codes specifically and how many people are reaching through those zip codes. Creative for our streaming, again, um, these are specific kindergarten enrollment, specific schools, and ads slash commercials that were running through those streaming devices. So that's kind of the data real quick. Any questions on the data for digital streaming? I have a couple more slides to talk about summer school pre-K specifically.
Ms. Spock there.
Yeah, so do you um, can you, is, when you say industry standard, are you talking about um school marketing or are you talking about in general, just digital marketing?
Good question. Talking about industry in general. Anyone who uses a digital platform, whether it's a school district, whether it's an engineering firm, whatever it might be, that's industry standard for the digital marketing platform, not just schools. Does that make sense?
Yes, and then um one additional question about um the schools. And so you mentioned like what um resonates with teachers in some of your ads. What is resonating with our families?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
For the click-through rate.
Yep, so um as we look back at the creative, let's go back a couple of slides. As we look at the creative specifically for these neighborhood schools, um, we talked about the teacher aspect. But as you look at Garfield, as you look at Garcia Rogers, um, we use words like, and then even truce, mentoring programs, academic support, uh nurturing, flourish, honor and excellence. This is where we're going to start adjusting a little bit of that message again to address those SWOT analyses that we're doing at each individual school. We've been doing strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat analysis for each school to find out versus our competition, um what is resonating with our audiences. So as we do those individual school plans, we are taking some of that messaging from those strengths, opportunities to start incorporating into these digital ads. So you're right on target with your question is how are we incorporating voice from our audience and from our parents and how we market to them?
And just a quick reminder, like, like, let's lean into our mics a bit. We're getting feedback that folks aren't hearing us very well. So just, just a quick reminder. Any other questions? Oh, uh, oh, sorry, Ms. Wolfsey?
Okay, um, I have a question about how, I, I see a lot of activity, which I think is great and I like the reach that I'm seeing here. So my question would be, how are you going to um know what is working and what is not? As far as how, what is that measure going to be and how are you tracking that? I assume we're looking for um conversion to an enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
And so did we measure before we started and are we measuring after? Just so we can know how things will be evaluated.
Great question, so we do. So working with um both of those platforms, scripts and Spectrum Reach, we've baselined um where we started. This is one of our, we, this is our second year, a little bit of doing the digital advertising platforms and the streaming campaigns. But to that point, we're really measuring who gets to that enrollment page. And then once they click through, do they complete in the enrollment? And we can measure that from our enrollment team. David Rand is going to come up and talk about the enrollment numbers as part of this as well so you can see some of the efforts paying off um through our, through our um efforts. Good question. Uh, ultimately, enrollment is the, the grand measure. Uh, and increase enrollment and how we market and communicate about KCPS.
And the one last point, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, so I remember seeing some data pieces um that spoke specifically to like um why our students were leaving the district. And um one in particular was like our achievement rate or how students were doing. Um, and then I can't think of the other one. But I wonder like in what ways are we highlighting what we talk about our focus schools and our neighborhood schools? Are we talking about the achievement? Because there's some great things going on in classrooms, so how are we doing that?
Yes, uh, very valid and important point that you mentioned. Thank you for bringing that up. So as we talk about the overall tagline of increasing performance and creating exceptional experiences, again, those individual plans, uh, James as the example, their APR is close to a hundred percent. Their annual performance report, annual performance review, their academic data is stellar. And so how do we talk to the James neighborhood and our James parents about how good they are academically, right? And how do those messages resonate to get more students to come into that school, but then also not leave that school? That's a common message that their parents understand. This is a good school academically, so we need to keep our kids here, retain our kids. So the academics, yes, we know is a number one factor in why students choose or why families choose or not choose KCPS. So very intent on again, that messaging as we pivot a little bit to targeting the academic support, academic programming, and the academic performance of each individual school. And telling the story, you know, I, I think we talked about at the um board retreat. As we think about how we're telling the story of KCPS, um, we, we need to ramp up a little bit, those stories highlighting the performance, highlighting how well we're doing. Um, and that's just part of the plan as we continue to establish this foundation and keep going higher and higher.
Um, and to your point, you use um the language APR. And I wonder how we can communicate that in a way that doesn't sound like, you know?
Jargony, educational jargon. Yes, so Dr. Vidal was talking about this. Uh, we're getting ready to roll out some presentations and some data around um not only APR, but we talk about AP scores, graduation rates, IB performance. We talk about proficiency rates, um our growth, how we're steadily growing from that basic, below basic proficient and advanced categories, how steadily we're growing our kids and even in our subgroups. So we understand that it's a challenge to translate sometimes the educational jargon to landing on our community in really um understandable ways. So I think again, your point is very valid. And how we talk about achievement is important, how we talk about performance is important so our community understands uh how well we're doing and the increases that we're making.
Ms. Ford.
Yeah, I wanted to know to what extent are we able to like micro-target like certain like populations or groups of folks? So if it's like school age kids or if there's any like a certain group that we're trying to reach out to directly? Like what ways are we able to control that?
We can do that. And that's one of the specif- specifications, specifications, specifications that we put in our RFQ uh for our marketing partner. So we do want some help and some guidance in that area as we really micro-target certain segments of our community. I think we have some work to do there and we're hopeful that our marketing partner, um, well, or requiring our marketing partner to engage in that work with us.
Dr. Jones.
Yeah, so this is a little bit broader than the specific buildings, but we, I know um a while ago we had been talking about converting a lot of our um webpages into Spanish. And so the in es- in Espanol page, how is that coming? And um what are the plans for continuing to build that out? Because I think that would go speak to what some of our colleagues have talked about in the past about an overall culture or climate, um in addition to what we're marketing for the individual buildings.
So when we built out our new website, um, we were very intentional about the language barrier or language opportunity for our families. And so on our website, on our homepage, you can choose um which language that you view the website in. So um we do track the analytics on how many folks um transitioned to the Spanish um verbiage on the website and they do that very often. So yeah, all of our content is translated to whatever language is selected in the dropdown menu on the homepage. Okay, I'm going to keep going. I know we have some more slides. Okay, um, so going through that real quick, we just, I'm going to reference, oh, mark, uh, marketing for summer school. These are just some samples that we used. You're going to hear a summer school report coming up in just a minute. Um, but wanted to say that we have had a wonderful push for enrollment in summer school this year. The last numbers I saw on Monday after the deadline were over fifty-two hundred students, uh, with students still wanting to enroll even today and yesterday. So we're in conversation about how we accommodate all of the enrollment and that's a good thing. That's a good thing to talk about is, is increase in enrollment there. And then pre-K marketing. Right now, we're working on the awareness component and the pandemic component. You know, how are we balancing, we're coming off a pandemic year with also um letting fer- parents, folks know that pre-K enrollment is open, that we have seats, and that uh you have a quality option for your young children. We are working on upward enrollment in P three and P four versus the same time last year, which you'll see in David's slide that he has coming up, I think, next. Um, but we're also working on signage and marketing clutter right now for our pre-K programming, banners at our schools that announce which schools have pre-K program there, how they enroll, and just again, that broad awareness as you're driving by a school that the school has pre-K available for your student. This is David's slide.
Thank you. Dr. Vidal, Board Chair, Board. Uh, just really wanted to quickly share some information on where we are with completed registrations as of yesterday versus the previous year on the same day. When we reference completed registrations, this When we reference completed registrations, this means that you have submitted all of your documents. If there's admission requirements for a signature school, they've been reviewed. You've gone through the whole process and admissions has approved your registration. We have made a lot of changes to how we do enrollment this year. One big piece of that was breaking it up into two phases. Last year, when you applied, if you just wanted to apply or indicate interest, you had to do the full-blown application, submit all your documents, et cetera. This year, we created a first step where it was a quick five-to-10-minute interest form where families could kind of indicate their interest. And then based on that, we then send out offers. And then after we send out offers, then families have the opportunity to complete registration. So the data you're looking at here, on the left-hand side, that's last school year at three different dates, March 3rd, 2020, because that's the day that we sent out offer letters this year was March 3rd, 2021. And then we have a snapshot of about two weeks ago, as well as a snapshot of yesterday. If you look at the first column for March 3rd, you can see that last year that there were 794 completed registrations by March 3rd. And over on the right-hand side, you can see there's zero because that's the day that we sent out those offer letters. And so we started off, you know, several months and about 800 registrations behind. By about a couple of weeks ago, we were almost caught up. And I'm happy to report as of today, we're actually ahead of where we were on this date last year, even though we started almost three months later in offering the opportunity to register. And the amount of time between when enrollment opened up last year and March 3rd is about, is very similar to the amount of time from when we sent out our initial offers on March 3rd and today. And so you, if you just compared the first kind of two months, three weeks of registration, we outpaced last year even more. So it's a good sign. We still have a lot of work to do, still really working to get in contact with families, make sure that they complete the registration process. But the numbers are trending in the right direction and we hope to continue to outpace last year by more and more.
I have a, oh, go ahead, Ms. Wolfsey.
So I'm glad we're over, but when I do a drill down into the, the, what I call the transition grades, kindergarten, seventh and ninth, I get a little concerned only because, and so I, or mainly on kindergarten and seventh, ninth. I know we have a, a history of, we get kids back then usually in ninth. So those will be the ones, just going forward, I want to kind of, hope they really start to pull ahead, essentially. And like, that's where your world and I think Ms. Waichel's world kind of collide, which is if we're targeting those transition times, we would hope to see this, you know, start to go up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I forgot to point out that a big part, or really, the growth that we're seeing is in pre-K. If you look at K-12, we're pretty close to where we were last year, but the place where we've really made those gains is in, is in pre-K. And so I think we're about 70 over where we were last year in pre-K and maybe about 20 behind where we were K-12. But we, we should see those numbers continue to grow, especially at seventh grade where we have a lot of outstanding Lincoln offers, where families are still in the process of completing registration. But yeah, you're absolutely right. We, we definitely want to see those improve.
Ms. Cortez?
So I may not phrase this question well, but we, we know at least anecdotally, and I think the data nationally shows that kindergarten was under-enrolled in a lot of places because families chose to hold their kids out. Are we doing any focused marketing on families who either held their kids out? Will those kids go into kindergarten this year? Will they, I mean, how are we, are we focusing on that at all since that, that's an entry point? And are we marketing specifically to those families who may have made that decision?
Yes, so you saw a heavy emphasis on the kindergarten enrollment in our digital campaigns, but also we've done postcards targeted to incoming kindergarten families that we've been working on within the KCPS boundaries. And then one of the things, I don't know if other people on the team want to talk about how we're even approaching kindergarten and, and what it looks like academically and what's appropriate now that we, we look across the nation and the trends, seeing that it's a very slow recovery for those kindergartners. So I'm not answering your question wholly, but we are having some focus efforts on kindergarten, but knowing that it's a trend across the nation, that we're not alone in trying to capture all of those kindergarten students. Dr. Shepherd, I'm kind of looking at you. Anything you want to add about kindergarten and just where we are? No, no, I'm putting you on the spot.
We are, we are making sure that we have the instructional systems in place so that...
Our department is making sure that we have the instructional systems in place, but as far as enrollment, we have our, our principals that are actually working to try and actively recruit those students, working alongside with Kelly's department to try and get those students back into school. But academically, what we're doing is we're looking at how do we, how are we going to actually deal with the various levels? We have some kindergartners who we know were in school this year. We have some who are at home and we have some who participated somewhat and not wholly. And so for us, it is about making sure that we have a system in place for our teachers and especially our new teachers so that they can, and that's, and that's the work that you'll hear more about, the proficiency scales, which will help them to really help every kindergartner that they touch and every first grader that they touch to get them to a proficient level as they move on through our system.
Thank you. I completely put you on the spot there, Dr. Shepherd. But I think Ms. Cortez, what that also speaks to is we do well in pre-K, right? We fill our pre-K spots in an app, in a normal year outside of a pandemic. But how are we retaining those pre-K students to then go into our kindergarten and elementary school programs? That's a challenge for us and we have to continue to work on that. Okay, anything else, Dr. Rand, or Mr. Rand? Okay, one thing I want to mention too with, with David and his team, as he's come in and helped revamp what the enrollment system and structure looks like, we've had a high level of collaboration between our team and his team. And I cannot commend Mr. Rand enough on the intentionality, the thought process, the engagement process that he has gone through to build this new enrollment system. We still have some work to do and I think we all acknowledge that, but we are way ahead of where we had previously been. And I think you're seeing some fruits of that labor through our applications, through how we've managed the process and how we're going to award equitably spots across our district. So again, kudos, Mr. Rand, on your work. I'm proud of you. One more slide, short-term, long-term plans where we are for marketing right now. Again, you're seeing some of those hyper-local school marketing plans come to fruition with our messaging and those SWOT analyses. And then, right now, we're looking at individual school enrollment goals, continuing those conversations with our principals. We're on conversation two and three after Dr. Bedell has initial conversation with them to lay out our marketing plans per school. One thing that's important to note here, and this is kind of speaking to some of your previous questions as a board, you know, how do we now finish that enrollment process? How do we secure those students? We get them here, we get them interested in our school. How do we secure them? How do we welcome students into our schools? How do we orient families into our schools? So we're building out common welcome packages, letters, communication that go to parents and timelines at which they will go to parents, starting in the first part of June. And so whether it's orientations that we're helping schedule, tours that we're helping schedule, and those back-to-school events. School leadership and I, and our team and even David's team are working very closely to make sure those welcome packets are secured and in place, starting June 1st. Blueprint 2030, quick update on that. We are currently in our staff engagement. We are visiting every school within the district to intently hear voice from our staff and from our teachers. We're on day three of that. We have had, I wouldn't say wonderful, it's an adjective, but really high-level comments from our staff. We are hearing comments across the board about challenges, about successes, about financial. If I, if we had known our purse strings, what would we do in KCPS? I know Fonda loves that question. But we're asking our staff to really help contribute to how we keep forming Blueprint 2030. And by the end of the week after graduation, we'll have hit every single school to hear from any staff who wants to participate. We're doing lunches and so we have a high level of engagement. Some principals are asking, you know, this is during your lunchtime, drop-in, open house style. Dr. Bedell's doing one tomorrow. And so we have teams of two leading those conversations at each school. We do four a day, four schools a day. So excited about that work. And then again, marketing partner update, we have reissued RFQ and they are due back on June 18th. And again, to your point, Ms. Ford, about helping that support that really hyper-focused segmentation for our boundaries. I tried to go quickly, but that was long. Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Cortez?
You mentioned something about the, the pre-K to kindergarten transition being challenging. When we, since we're using partners to expand our pre-K seats in some cases, do we have agreements in place with those partners that'll, that help us with marketing to the families who are not in our buildings? How do we?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I will need to check with our early learning team to see if they have secured partnerships or agreements on that. I don't know the answer to that. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Waichel.
All right, so the next item under the superintendent's report is the Lincoln College Prep. Let me just find it real quick. That's rolling off here. Alumni room. And so I just wanted, this is just another update to the board, something that will be coming back to the board for you all to take action on. So let me just read this real quick. On May 6th, 2021, I received a request from Ms. Kristen Foster, principal at Lincoln College Prep, to rename the alumni room to become the Lincoln High School RT Co's National Alumni Room. She's been working in conjunction with Mr. Ronald Walton, president of the Lincoln High Alumni Association. The purpose of this room is to preserve and provide public access to the history of Lincoln College Prep and the faculties, you know, for the faculty, staff and alumni. The room will house artifacts, material and information. This will allow students, staff and the LCPA community to learn more about Lincoln's rich history. A naming committee has been formed, which includes community members, the KCPS board member and Nate Hogan, LCPA staff, parents and students. In accordance with KCPS Board Policy FF, facility names, the naming committee will utilize the next 45 days to ensure that KCPS students, families and the community are informed and active participants in this renaming discussion. After that process has occurred, the board will then be asked to vote on the renaming request in compliance with Board Policy 4.1.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. And just, I want to publicly admonish one of your team members, Dr. Davis, for volunteering me to do this. He tricked me into this at the last board meeting, so just heads up there. Go ahead, Dr. Bedell.
No, that's it. Just, just an announcement to let everybody know the 45-day engagement period will start officially.
Got you.
Right. And then the next item that we have is just a quick summer school update. As you heard earlier, we've done a lot of work around summer school and trying to promote summer school. We have a problem on our hands. You know, it's a good problem, but nevertheless, it's a problem. We have over 5,200 students that have signed up for summer school, but we are lacking in staff that is signing up. And this is not just a KCPS problem. I was on with the charters today. Some of them are not even offering summer school. Some who are offering summer school are having significant problems getting enough teachers to sign up. Teachers are looking forward to trying to get through this year and have some time to just kind of recover from a year of having to teach in a way that they hadn't taught before. Additionally, with KCPS starting a school year later, that has resulted in us ending the school year later. We were looking at trying to do a five-week summer school learning program, but then that would only give teachers who are doing summer school a shortened amount of time before they have to come back in August if summer school is not to end until the 23rd of July. So that's a problem. And so what we're trying to do now is we've, we've, we've offered hourly rate. I don't know that there's enough money you can offer teachers when they need to have a mental break. So I don't know that adding more money is going to increase the number of teachers. But what we do think is there may be an opportunity that we have to come back to the community and say, if we want to have summer school, do we make it a four-week summer learning program? Are there ways that we can also entice teachers to maybe do two weeks and then have another set of teachers come in and do two weeks or three weeks? So these are things that we're exploring right now. I know that one charter has already taken that approach in their struggles and because charters are much smaller, it's a lot easier for them to figure that out than it is trying to, trying to do 52, 5,300 students. So that has worked at one of the charters and it is something that we are also looking at, as I shared with the charters today, around what we're doing. But that is the reality of where we are right now with summer school and we will keep you all posted. We are probably looking at being around 40, 42 to 43 teachers away from being able to properly service all of these kids that we're, that we're looking to serve this summer. So that, that's just an update that I thought we needed to add on to the agenda to let you know, because that was our latest data on Monday. And a good problem, but it's a problem.
Mr. Barca?
Now, Reed has passed it to me. Yeah, Dr. Bedell, has there been any discussion on your, on your earlier call about potential collaborations with charter schools? And maybe a summer school model that would be them and us working together?
So that is a future conversation. At this point, it's kind of late, but that is something that came up today that we were saying, that's something that we probably need to talk about at a later time. I, I don't know if I, I shared with people. We did talk about manual tech being an opportunity to partner with charters where their kids can have an opportunity to, to sign, to, to sign it. The charter schools can sign an MOU and we can try to get manual tech filled up and eventually be able to add even more FTEs. So that is, that, as a result of that conversation today, the summer school piece did come up, but it's, it's too late at this point. But for next year, there's a possibility.
Ms. Buckner?
Does statute say that these have to be certified teachers?
So at this point, the statute is saying, it's not saying that they have to be certified teachers, but what the state is saying is that if they aren't certified teachers, we will not receive any funding. So actually, they need to be certified teachers in order for us to receive funding from the state reimbursement funding. So because you're right, there are, we have a number of substitute teachers that I think are interested, but I, I think that's the exact issue right now is we could staff it, but we won't receive any funding, is my understanding.
Dr. Davis, did you want to comment?
Yeah.
That's correct. I was just going to add that teachers can also have a sub-certification in the event that they don't have the full certificate. So the same that allows us to hire substitute certified teachers through the year and still receive that reimbursement, we have that same right in the summer.
Okay, so you're saying if, if it's a substitute teacher and they have, and they have a sub-certification, we can then receive the reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Ford?
So when is the, I guess, the, the la- the last date that we, we need to have those numbers filled? And then what is the worst-case scenario if we're not able to meet the numbers? Are we turning kids away at that point?
No, I know you guys have been working on this. I don't want to give a wrong answer, but go ahead.
Yeah, so that absolutely would be the worst-case scenario. That is our very last option. Dr. Shepherd has made it clear that every other option will precede that. What we're looking at, at this, at this current time, we do have, actually have a number of certified subs who have reached out requesting the work. And that pool of substitute teachers is higher than the vacancies that we currently have. So we know that that's a possibility. But we also are exploring the options such as possibly retaining the five-week program, but maybe not having school on Fridays. There was some interest from some of our current certified teachers who expressed that if we went to that model, then they may would sign up. So that is also another option. So we have several avenues that we're exploring to get to the number of staff needed in order to accommodate those who have signed up.
And so Dr. Davis is correct. Our goal is to do all, like, we will execute these four different options that we talked about in cabinet on Monday before we would get to a point. Like, it would have to be an absolute just nightmare if we have to get to that point, we have to turn kids away. We, you know, we, I would rather say, even if it means going from five to four weeks to shorten it, I'd rather do that than have to turn kids away. But I also know that it is very important that we have teachers that are rested and ready to go come August. The worst thing we can do is have teachers coming in. The worst thing we can do is have teachers coming in already feeling burned out because they didn't get the proper amount of rest that they need. And then to come in in August and then burn it out on us by the time we hit October, that's going to be a lot more detrimental, not only on that teacher, but on those kids that that teacher served. So that's the reason why we're looking at figuring out if we can just get people to come in two weeks, and then another two come in two weeks, that could, that could really help us probably fill these numbers too. So we're, we're not at a worst-case scenario right now, but I thought it was important that I share with the board and the community where we are, because this is a, this is a critical issue for us as we're going into our, our summer school mode.
Maybe if I could just add, we did anticipate that this may be, you know, a challenging year coming off the pandemic. And so plans were made to raise the hourly rate for teachers. We thought that would incentivize people to sign up as well as incentives for students for, for attending. And so it sounds like it worked on the student side. And so we're, but as Dr. Bedell said, if people need a mental health break, the amount of money is probably not an incentive right now.
All right, thank you.
All right. So Mr. Chair, this is the last items under the superintendent's report. The preliminary budget presentation, which will be presented by Ms. Linda Quinley.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Bedell, and Chair, and Public. I wanted to start by sharing with you, we'll get to the right page here, an appreciation for our newly, I still call us Newly Formed Finance Committee, and the three members that participated last week. I think we had a really great meeting that allowed us to go a little deeper in the weeds on summary budget document. They gave us some fabulous feedback and suggestions for the final document, and so we have, are working and continuing to work on those, knowing that at the end of the day, our goal is to produce a budget document that is understandable, readable, and valuable to the reader, whether they be you, me, a teacher, a, a member of the public. So thank you, Committee, for that. Additionally, I want to really give a huge thanks and shout out to Veronica Sarmiento, who's our Budget Analyst, and who's been working intermittently as she can to do two things that make what we're sharing with you tonight better than we've been able to do at this point in the year in the past. And one of those came from a direct feedback from a committee member, Ms. Cortez, really noting last year that when we bring you this document, which is the financial section of the budget in really its final form at this point, we have been comparing historically to a first, an Amendment One, as we refer to it, that amendment from January, versus this final amendment that's going to give us a better picture of what their, this year actually looks like. And so Veronica has worked not only to get this full document done 30 days before we're going to ask you to accept it, but also to be able to incorporate that Second Amendment number so you're looking at a much better comparison of this year to next year inside the document. So we're really excited that we've been able to get there. It's been a heavy lift, and she completed that yesterday morning, but it doubles the value of this report in my mind. So our goal tonight with this, because what you need to do is make sure we, that you have a good understanding of what you're looking at page by page. So I'm going to give you a little bit of that so that as you go home and look at it, you can flip through it with a little bit of that understanding. Ms. Kolkmeier is printing this because I believe these are best printed and noted and highlighted and those kinds of things. She's printing it for you so that you'll have it when you leave tonight to take home for that purpose versus just looking at it on your iPad. So I won't read through all these because we're going to go through them, but what I'm going to do is give you reader tips. So page by, section by section, what is that section, what is its value, and what should you be looking for, and what does it mean? So we'll flip right to the first one, and I apologize, these numbers are small. But I just want to talk to you about what this page is. So on page six of the document that you will get printed and that is in front of you, it is called the, let me look at it in here. I made, made up my own headings, sort of. It's called Summary of Proposed Comprehensive Budget. I call it the Budget Summary. You may recall from some of the many meetings we've had as we talk about our process and our planning and our, what I call sort of training on a budget. This is one of the required pages in Missouri DSE requirements. And its intent is to give you summary data by fund. So when you look across the columns, you see operating. You'll remember that's what we live on day in and day out, that we have the most influence over. Capital, which is a restricted fund. Once money goes into capital, it doesn't come back out, with the exception for use of capital projects and a couple of other highly regulated, not usually used allowances. Grants and child nutrition services, which you'll remember we set up in its own fund because it's our intent that that serve as a business entity, and it operate within itself, making enough money to cover all of its costs, including its capital needs. So we keep it separate for that purpose. And then on the far right, you have the total of all of those funds. So this is your summary, board eye, uh, budget summary. Then as you flip through it, the next section of this document is summary revenue and expenditures, and this is in total. So you'll see, you don't, you don't, you no longer see those fund names across the top, but rather you see the different timelines that we're looking at this. So there's where we see for the first time what we're going to present to you next month as the Second Amendment, which I'll remind you is very close to what we believe our projected actuals will be, but appropriate to make sure we don't fall outside of the parameters that we can't spend beyond an authorized budget. So that's what those first two columns are. FTE, of course, means Full-Time Equivalent Employee, and then the budget dollars. So you see local, county, state, federal, total revenue. Then you see expenditures by those primary function codes defined by DSE. And then fund balance information again. So then the next two columns are next year's proposed budget, again, FTE and dollars, and then the change. So increase or decrease in those two columns. You'll see in the middle of the page, under the totals, that we are decreasing FTE by 148 next year. And that is our responsiveness to our ability, our need to become as efficient as we can, targeting and addressing specifically who and how we're serving kids right now. The next section of the budget is a detailed expenditure by fund and function. So again, I'll take you back to the times we've had a little training on that and give you some reminders. You'll see this one, as you look across the top, is again by fund, another requirement. Function is that set of numbers in like the fourth column, but the first column with numbers. So 1111, per the DSE Accounting Manual, is elementary instruction. 1131 is middle school instruction. And so there are several pages of this. I've just pulled a little snippet out so that you can see by DSE function, whether it be instructional, operating, administrative, how this budget is set up. The next section is detailed revenue by fund and object. And so again, back to our training, function is what are we doing? We're doing middle school instruction, elementary instruction. Object is, and here we're on revenues, I'll save that example. But object for fun, object for revenue tells you what that revenue comes from. So current taxes, delinquent taxes, catering, food service, you can look down the list. Again, multiple pages here, and this one is by fund. So it lets you see how much is going into general, how much is going into teachers, how much is going into capital, child nutrition services, and totals, of course, and then the change. You will find this section and the next section meet a second obligation. We've probably met three or four of the obligations by this point of this, of the budget in the state of Missouri, that it gives you historical comparisons. So there are going to be multiple pages here, and you're going to see fiscal year 19, 20, 21, and 22, because we're obligated to give you that historical comparison. And it is in this report. Then we have detailed expenditures by fund and object. So if we go back to the example that I started, we're spending money on elementary instruction. We saw that 1111 line. This breaks that line down further to say, is it certified salaries, non-certified salaries, substitute salaries, insurance, benefits, transportation, gas, whatever it might be on these multiple pages. Once again, giving you that four-year historical comparison that is required by the state of Missouri. And then the final section is the budget by department or program, another requirement by the state of Missouri. And this looks a little differently from, was it instruction? As to what area were we spending it in? Was it board services? Was it human resources? Was it middle school? And so you're going to see, or was it instruction or gifted and talented? How do you break down instruction? So this goes a little deeper into the what we're spending and gives you some historical reference as well. I want to go back because I didn't do something that I think is really important on this very first one. When you look at the budget summary, which in my mind should become every administrator and board member's favorite page of a budget document, if there's such a thing, this is really important because those first few lines give you the meat. How much total revenue and how many total expenditures by fund are we planning in next year's budget? And is that revenue or expenditures over or below? Are those expenditures over or below revenues? So you will see here on the 1, 2, 3, 4th line down, it says revenue over, under expenditures. As we've been telling you for many, many, many weeks and several times now, we're going to bring you a budget that spends roughly a million dollars more than we are bringing in in the operating budgets. Comfortable with that because of our fund balance situation. In capital, we're spending a little more than we're bringing in, 5.5 million, I think that says. I should have made that font a little darker so that I could read it from here. Again, planned and intentional because while we don't have huge amounts of revenue coming in, we do have good fund balances in capital. And as I mentioned, once it goes into capital, it can't come back out and be put anywhere else. So we want to make sure that we're not sitting on that capital money when we have known projects that are necessary and appropriate. You've seen that list of projects. You know what they are. We've walked through it a couple of times. And then as you just go across, you get to see the total. So really important to note in that operating column, which is the one you commonly hear referenced by percentage of fund balance, we are looking at being 27% unrestricted fund balance with this budget and 24% after restriction. So a really nice, appropriate fund balance for KCPS. And then on my very last slide, because again, this is, walking through this document takes a lot of time, and you're going to want to sit down with it individually, so you can refer back to these. Certainly, you can reach out to myself or to Ms. Thompson or Dr. Bedell for support in studying this document. But just to let you know next steps, we've got plenty of time now for you to review and provide feedback and comment on this document. This is 90% of the requirement from the state of Missouri. The rest of it is that administrative executive summary that Dr. Bedell and I will be working on now that we're at this point. You know, we've invested a lot of time in that the last few years and tried to really make that a more robust piece. So we want to continue that work. That's the first, next set of documents. We have organizational summary, summary that we added last year that tells the reader a little more about who we are, who serves, who teaches, you know, what's the tenure of our teachers, what's the education level of our teachers. Again, just information to give the reader more information. Ms. Thompson's teams have completed all the staffing allocation summary pages. You've seen those in sample before where they were partially complete, and we didn't have the special education numbers and those kinds of things. Those are all fully complete, so those will be in your, your document. And then capital project detail, of course, will be in there. But really appreciative, again, of the Finance Committee, who brought us to really great suggestions, which is the value of, of this committee, to make sure that our reader understands what our ESER funds and all of those federal funds are that we've been getting lately. What are they? What's their intended purpose, and how do they play a role in this budget and in our future and our planning? And then a fund balance detail, just talking a little bit about what we just did. What fund balance do we have? Why do we need it? What does it take to get us through the school year? So we're going to be adding a couple of new pages based on that feedback that we got from the Finance Committee. June 9, when you come for your board meeting, we hope to hand you that, our plan is to hand you that full document with all of these additional items so that you again have two weeks with those additional documents prior to when we ask you for approval on June 23. Questions?
Any questions? Ms. Wolfsey?
It's really just, do the staffing allocations, are those the school sheets that I'm used to? Okay, thank you.
Yep, that we've added the last couple of years. Yes, ma'am.
Easiest question ever. Ms. Cortez?
Did it. Mine is really more a comment than a question first. Thank you, Ms. Quinley, for walking us through kind of the framework. And the second is that if any of my colleagues want to join us on a Wednesday morning, in between the two board meetings for the Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, June 16, that's another opportunity to just hear a little bit more. Probably addressing some final questions on that agenda. So if you don't have anything else to do on Wednesday morning, June 16, we'll buy you a cup of coffee virtually at 8:00 a.m.
I wondered about that, how we were going to do that, so we need virtually.
That's the best way for me to make coffee.
I did want to add one more thing. I apologize. I meant to get it on that last slide, and I didn't. We do have an email address set up for our public board. Clearly, we want you to send those questions to Dr. Bedell and myself as you review. And please fire away, say there looks like a comma is missing here, this word's misspelled. All that, we, we want you to help us do that kind of edit work before we publish a final document. But we also want your questions on this doesn't make sense, or I don't understand this, or please explain. But for the public, we do have an email address. This document is posted out on Symbly. It's available out there for them to look at now. But if they have questions, they can send them to kcpasbudget@kcpublixschools.org, and then we will be responding to those very quickly.
So KCPS Budget at?
KCPublixschools.org.
Any other questions for Ms. Quinley? Well, thank you to you as well as the Finance Committee. I mean, this is, I guess this is our third for, five of us. This is our third, well, actually, it's way more than, or way less than that for Ms. Wolfsey, but our third budget that we're going into, and it feels like every year it gets, I don't want to say this and have it come across negatively, but it gets cleaner, right? And the whole, the whole purpose of, to your point, Ms. Quinley, of the Finance Committee was to help us engage and make this stuff more consumable for the average person in our community. And so it's clear to me we're moving in that direction. So thank you for the work that you guys are doing in that regard for our community. It's appreciated.
We appreciate it as well.
All right, and that concludes the superintendent's report, correct? All right, so we're going to move on to regular business items, and I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are five items that the board is, that the administration is requesting the board to take action on. Item number one is Curriculum Associates, in the amount of $528,956. We're requesting the approval of this contract extension into '21, '22. This contract provides the iReady Achievement Screener and intervention supports data.
All right, any questions from the board? No? All right, well, do we have a motion to approve the renewal agreement with Curriculum Associates?
Some of.
A second? Ms. Cortez? Did you second that? Sorry.
I did.
You did? Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. The renewal agreement with Curriculum Associate passes, is approved. So we'll move on, Dr. Bedell, to First Amendment for EBS Healthcare.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Second item is the EBS Healthcare Contract, increase of $900,000. Administration is requesting the approval of the amendment to this contract to cover the costs relating to contracted special education staffing. Annually, we project for internal hires and use EBS to fill in with contracted staffing as needed. This amendment covers the need for the current year and is funded by underuse of salaries and benefits.
All right, any questions from the board? No? All right, do we have a motion to approve the First Amendment to the EBS Healthcare Agreement?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, the First Amendment to the EBS Healthcare Agreement has been approved. Dr. Bedell?
All right, Mr. Chair. The third item is Belfonte Ice Cream Company, in the amount of $1.1 million. The administration is requesting approval of the 2021, '22 contract with Belfonte for our Child Nutrition Services Dairy Contract. These funds are available in the '21, '22 CNS Budget.
All right, any questions from the board? Nope. All right, is there a motion to approve the Belfonte Ice Cream Company contract?
Some of.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
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 Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, it's been moved, or it's been approved. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fourth item is Collective Bargaining Agreement with Certified Staff through the American with the annual re-opener changes in the 2021-2022 salary schedules as mutually agreed to by the KCPS and AFT bargaining teams.
All right. Are there any questions? Dr. Collier, did you want to?
Um, I was going to just walk through it for the public.
Perfect.
I know I've shared with the board, but I'm going to go through very quickly. This was not an extensive negotiation period for next school year. We spent a lot of time this past, this current school year looking at cleaning up our distance learning language and then also working on our hybrid language. And so when we started looking at next year, we only had a few minor adjustments. So I'm going to walk through those really quickly. So the, um, the changes came in the section of Teacher Workday, which is found on page 16 and 17, and then also the Distance Learning Page Workday, which actually dealt with inclement weather. And that's page 21. So looking at our Professional Learning Community Day, for those who may not know, Wednesday is a longer workday for our teachers as we devote 65 minutes for professional development and that occurs on Wednesdays. And so what we did is we delineated really clearly how the time could be used. It will be 65 minutes. 60 minutes will be devoted to PLC time. And then we're going to make sure that the five minutes at the end is devoted to the survey so that we can get a sense of how our teachers are feeling about the professional development that's happening in their buildings across the district. Also, we wanted to be clear on how the time could be used. In the past, we've kind of assumed some of these things, but we went ahead and added language here around the expectation that teachers are going to participate in the PLC time with their grade level and our subject area, content area. Also, professional development is embedded in the PLC process. So there will be times where there will be some direct professional development happening, someone standing in front of the staff actually delivering professional development. But that's a part of and embedded in that PLC process that is clearly outlined in the CBA. And then also, administration may use some of that time on Wednesday for staff meetings. And just to be clear, we don't expect for our principals to take up all the time with staff meetings, only when there are specific items that they need to cover that are related to what's occurring in their building and that needs to be addressed with staff. This addresses here, this language, the faculty advisory committee and the school leadership team coming together to outline what the professional development will look like for a semester or for the year, ensuring that it's aligning with the school improvement plans. And then those plans will then go to the Office of Professional Development for review and approval. Changes can be made throughout the year based on needs of the school. And so at that time, if that needs to happen, then that will go, the plan will go back to the Professional Development Department for review and approval. This is the calendar changes that we've discussed before. As we've shared, we've added nine days to our calendar. The teacher work year has traditionally been 185 days. It will now be 194. And we're devoting three days to PLC days. And that will be one at the end of quarter one, one at the end of quarter two, and then one at the end of quarter three. And then we've added six intervention days, which is time when teachers will dig down, actually work with students based on what they've covered during those deep data dive days to provide intervention to students. And so there'll be two intervention days after quarter one, after quarter two, and quarter three. And then the inclement weather portion, this is just to ensure that if we, if we have more than two days, inclement weather days, where distance learning didn't happen, then we will make them up, but the first two, we won't. However, we do expect that if we know in advance that is likely to be an inclement weather day, we can plan for that, make sure students take their devices home, and then there will be distance learning happening. But if we encounter a scenario where we're not able to plan ahead because we didn't know that the weather was going to be as bad as it may be in a particular day, then those days would be days that we would not make up. However, we will make sure that our hourly staff, school staff is paid for that time so they're not penalized because we're not in session on that day. And then this covers the economic portion and Ms. Linda Quinley is going to walk us through that, our compensation.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. One simple, easy slide for this one. And it's always a pleasure to work with AFT and Dr. Collier and get to do the lesser part of the work. So on employee insurances, we have agreed to continuing access to multiple fully paid premium plans for medical and dental. And we do provide fully paid life insurance as well for our employees. And so we've continued that historical practice in this collective bargaining agreement. On compensation, our primary work the last couple of years has been around raising that starting teacher pay to become more competitive locally. We find that we're competitive with our more experienced teachers, but not as competitive with our newer teachers. And so we averaged a $750 starting pay increase this year across those columns in addition to a fairly significant increase last year so that we are getting very close to being competitive locally on our starting pay and throughout that salary schedule. Additionally, we extended steps for five years at the bottom to recognize experience up to 25 years, I think is how far that schedule now goes, because we have teachers that stay with us. While those increases are much smaller at the bottom, because you've received them, the better part of your increase is early in your career, we did put those into recognized service.
Something I meant to say when I started the presentation, I do want to acknowledge the new AFT president and acknowledge and congratulate him, Mr. Jason Roberts. He's here this evening. He has served on the AFT, he has served on the AFT side as a teacher representative and so now he will be assuming the presidency. So congratulations, Mr. Roberts.
And I will say this, we're losing a pretty good teacher because, because he was a very effective teacher. So we're looking forward to you transitioning, but you know, hopefully you've trained up the person replacing you in MoFs.
Congratulations, Mr. Roberts. Any questions for Dr. Collier? Oh, Mr. Barca?
Yeah, it was a question around the competitiveness. What barriers exist in making us competitive amongst our peers in the same business?
Salary-wise? I think being tied to that single salary schedule that we have to follow, that presents a challenge for us because we don't have flexibility. If another institution offers more, we, we are not able to just, to adjust that so that we can compete. We, we follow our schedule in terms of education and experience and we do so that we're being, so that we're being fair to all of our employees. We try, we try not to veer away from that because as soon as you do that, then you start having problems with inconsistencies. But we do have some positions where it would be helpful if we could have a different salary schedule for, for example, if we could have for science and our special education, foreign language, and some others, that would be very helpful if we could do that. Because right now, everyone is competing for those teachers. Everyone wants science teachers, math teachers, special education teachers. And if you can offer more, then you're more likely to get them. And that shortage presents a problem for us because we're typically not able to compete as well in terms of salary. Okay.
Additionally, that's such a, a huge point for human resources and their comments have been the last couple of years, just getting teachers in particular to take, a first-year teacher to take a contract for us when KCK starts several thousand dollars higher right across the way. You can't, you know, you live off of what you make now, right? And you're a new kid, a young kid coming out of college, first job, you went and bought a car because you're a college grad, you got an apartment, and that paycheck matters. Whereas if they look at our schedule, we are only a few years away from moving ahead because we have a better total schedule than KCK, but they start higher than we do. So we've got to get them to come and stay a few years and then they're way better off long-term in their career with us. But again, you live off what you make and if they're offering you $3,000 more and Dr. Collier can't go be, I mean, first year's first year, that costs us candidates as well.
I think this year, we're pretty close to that.
Yeah, we are so much closer.
One, one comment is, again, just kudos to you all, kudos to AFT. Having a union as part of this process for our teachers is incredibly important and unique within our, our market in the Kansas City Public Schools boundaries. So kudos to them for that. I was very impressed, although marginal, within the means for an increase for our teachers. So glad to see that as well.
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, I really just wanted to make a comment. So I wanted to thank you. I know this is the second time you've given us this information and we had time beforehand to ask questions. So I won't add to that list of questions, but more of a comment, I think some of my questions that I still have maybe center around some of the items that weren't included in the areas that were addressed in this year's revisions. And so I think given the timing of when I joined the board and the timing of when these evaluations happen, I don't feel fully equipped to, to vote the way I need to. And so I just wanted to kind of share publicly that it's not because of lack of support, but really just the timing of when I joined the board and really wanting to ask more questions and offer more feedback on the items that I feel like are missing from this. So I think this is one of the most important agreements that we have, but just wanting to share openly that the way I vote when we do will be not because of lack of support, but just timing and wanting to offer more feedback.
Ms. Buckner?
I will echo that sentiment, but I do have one, one question that really stood out to me. And it's really around teacher evaluation. And so if somebody can explain why that is not included in this agreement and, you know, just a high level, but I, I echo Tanisha's sentiment.
Well, it typically has not been a part of the agreement because that's more of an administrative decision around the evaluation process. However, we do have an evaluation committee that consists of administrators and teachers that work on it together, but it's not necessarily a negotiable item because it's more administrative-led around what that evaluation should look like around expectations. But we do include teachers' voice as we're working on the evaluation. So you won't see it in the CBA.
Yeah, okay. So I'm looking at the conditions for layoff and probationary teachers. And so I just wonder how their performance around evaluations play into that. So that's why I'm asking. I know like, you know, the state is involved and there's a lot of different things involved, but I just, yeah. To, to, once again, double down on Tanisha's point, I don't know that I have enough information to vote for this in confidence.
Okay, sure. And I'd be happy to speak with you more about it later. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement for certified personnel, teachers, counselors, and librarians?
Some moved.
It's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Barca?
Yes.
Abstain.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. All right. The motion has been approved. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the final item is Children's Mercy Data Sharing Agreement. The administration requests the approval for the data, data sharing agreement with Children's Mercy for the TLC School COVID Testing Study. The purpose of this study is to provide information on positivity rate projections in schools and students and family preferences on testing in schools. This is a voluntary program. Students and families must sign up through Children's Mercy to participate and they can choose to not continue in the program at any time.
Any questions? Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you. I just had asked for a little bit of clarification on, and I think you did give a little bit, but that how, and I think Bill, you're prepared to kind of just share how parents will, what is the district's role in helping to sign up, parents or not sign up? Like what, we're not the ones doing that. We are, Children's Mercy, I believe, is doing that. Can you just share with me what you had kind of shared earlier?
Yeah. And Dr. Woodley, if you want to jump in, you can at any time. My understanding is that, so they don't have to go to each individual family, that they use this as a hub? So in the discussions I had with Julie, our senior trainer who worked on it, she said the thing that we were most comfortable with was saying, we will let our families know that this is available, then they can decide if they want to do it or not. So then, if they, whether they participate in the program or not is really their choice. And any information that they share with the hospital will be a consent between them and the hospital.
That was mainly my concern is who the consent was through. And I really just wanted to make sure that the, that our parents understood what they were consenting to and what our role was going to be in that. So thank you for looking into that for me.
So, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just for test. Follow up on that, which is, I was a little unclear as well with regard to whether we would be providing data or we would simply be providing access to families. And so there will be no data sharing at all between us and Children's Mercy, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I do, I do think, well, any other questions before I jump in here? No? I do think it'd be interesting to at least see the consent form while the consent is not between the, oh, it is in there. Okay. It's in the back. Got it. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Sounds like there are no additional questions there. So is there a motion to approve the Children's Mercy Data Sharing Agreement?
Some moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Barca?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll now move on to the approval of the March and April Board Minutes. And will the Board Secretary please just give an overview of, of why we have those in, in the regular business items as opposed to the consent items?
I'm happy to. Thank you. These minutes are from the meetings pre-election. So we have two board members who are unable to vote on these minutes and as in consent, that would take them out of consent for voting for any item.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Is there any questions on the, the April, March or April minutes? No? Okay. Well, is there a motion to approve the March and April minutes?
Some moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.[1724.13]